I don't pour concrete, I place it.
I pour it.
Okay, good evening. Thank you all for coming tonight. We will get the meeting called here to order at seven o'clock. Let's start by rising for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. Can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Motion, can I get a second?
I will second.
Seconded by, or first by Commissioner Vriesen, seconded by Commissioner Bowling. All right, and with that, can I get approval to approve the minutes from last meeting?
You need to call the question for approval.
Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting?
All in favor of the agenda.
All in favor of the agenda.
Aye.
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 Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from last week, from our last meeting?
Motion to approve the minutes of the January 22nd, 2024 Planning Commission meeting.
All right, so first by Commissioner Vriesen, seconded by Commissioner Ringkamp. All those in approval, say aye, aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, all right. Moving on then to the first item for tonight, for the public hearing on Stillwater Schools Comprehensive Plan.
Evening Chair, members of the Planning Commission. I will be able to present to you this request from Lake Elmo, or for Lake Elmo Elementary, from Stillwater Public Schools. So we've got two requests that are in front of the city currently. We have a comprehensive plan amendment, and that's actually twofold. Part of that is a future land use map amendment, and the other part is an adjustment to the city's MUSA, which is the Municipal Urban Service, Metropolitan Urban Service Area, MUSA boundary. And then the second request is to amend the city's zoning map, which is to change this parcel from ag to public facilities. And so up on the screen, you'll see kind of a high-level aerial overview of the south part of the city, and that subject property roughly 47 acres in size, 47, 48. That's up on the screen in circled in red. And that is at the intersection of Lake Elmo Avenue and 10th Street North. So what is being proposed on that site? You can see an image or a rendering of the concept plan for the elementary school up on the screen. I just want to note that this is a concept level plan. It is still very much, the elements of the site are still very much being worked out by the school district at this time, and they'll be able to speak to some of those things that they're focused on for the site. Per the narrative that was submitted by Stillwater Schools, the site is again roughly 47.6 acres. The building is proposed at 148,000 square feet, and that is the gross floor area of the use. This would be a two-story building, two stories in some areas and one story in others. It would serve approximately a planned amount of students, 1,100 students. There are separate accesses that I'd like to point out on this site. One access point is proposed along 10th Street North. That would serve the buses and the requirement for that bus traffic to be separate from like parent drop-off or other school site-associated traffic. And then the other access on Lake Elmo Avenue would serve those parking stalls and for student drop-off. There is a potential, per the applicant, the use of this park facilities on this site by both the school district and the city. I believe that is actually the case on other school sites in the city, so there's a shared use of the play facilities. And then lastly, we're looking at things like stormwater ponding on the site in addition to other changes that will be, or improvements rather, that will be required. The school district is requesting a connection to both city sewer and water services. Okay, so a little bit more about the comprehensive plan amendment that's being proposed. Again, there's sort of two parts to this one. The first part is a future land use map amendment. So up on the screen on the right side is a future land use map from the city's comp plan. The future land use map shows the planned land uses across the community through the 2040 planning horizon of that plan. Currently, the site that the school is proposed on is rural area development. This is a site that is, or a future land use rather, that is not served by urban services such as water or sewer services. Rural area development is primarily intended to be kind of low-density residential development. And so the school district is proposing to change to a more fitting future land use category, institutional. The second change being proposed is to the city's MUSA boundary. So the MUSA boundary is in place over areas that are covered or served by city sewer. And so for a property to be served by municipal sewer, it has to be within the MUSA and thus the request to include this property. When we change that MUSA boundary in the city's comprehensive plan, we have to change a number of the maps in the comprehensive plan that show the MUSA boundary. There are maps 3.2, 3.3, 3.4, and 3.7, and then in Chapter 9, wastewater services, map 9-1. There are also a number of tables within that chapter that we talk about planned intensity or planned use of wastewater or generation of wastewater in certain areas. So just to dive in a little bit, up on the screen, you can see the purpose of the future land use districts, both the current and the proposed on the bottom. I just note to you that in the institutional future land use category, schools are directly referenced as an appropriate use for land in that future land use category. And we don't see schools referenced in the rural area development purpose. Kind of moving on to those MUSA amendments, you can see on the screen several of the maps. I didn't intend for us to take a deep dive here, but these are the maps that we will be amending to include the school site in the MUSA boundary and to have the correct future land use category. So that would include the MUSA map on the left of the screen. In the middle of the screen, that's the city's future land use map. On the right, that's basically just the future land use map that's a little bit more zoomed in into the city's south planning area. Now up on the screen, you can see on the left, that's map 3-7. This one's important because this also shows us the planned decade for the development of various properties. The school district is proposing to have this property be developed within this decade to be able to move forward their project. The center of the screen is a map that's found in the wastewater chapter. And then on the right side of the screen, you'll see the anticipated rec units, which is basically sack units, as a measurement of wastewater generation for a property. So these are all estimates or maps that we're amending in order to approve the school's request. So to talk a little bit about the rezoning, the site on the screen, this is the city's zoning map. So this is different than the future land use map. The zoning map is showing this property as agricultural. And so the school district is proposing is to switch the zoned zoning district to public facilities. And you can see the purpose of the public facilities district up on the screen. And again, that directly references schools and other governmental or institutional facilities. There are a number of uses that are allowed in the public facilities district. Public schools are one of those uses allowed through a conditional use permit. So that's how the school district has identified their proposed land use guidance. So I just really quickly want to talk about one thing that sort of relates to zoning but sort of doesn't. This is the proximity of the Oakdale Gun Club to the school site. And specifically, you'll see up on the screen several parcels that are in proximity to the school site, which is on the right of the screen. The Oakdale Gun Club owns and operates on these two parcels the cursor is currently hovering over. So Minnesota state statutes do have some protections actually for gun clubs. And these go back to a law that was passed in 2005 that was sort of informally called the Shooting Range Protection Act. Really what the purpose of that did or was, was to allow for shooting ranges to continue operation over time. As land use, you know, around shooting clubs changes, then cities might naturally have slightly more restrictive standards for shooting ranges. And so that's the reason for this law. The reason that I mention it is because it does have some impacts on this project. And specifically, what the law does is creates a mitigation area around the land that's owned by the gun club and any uses in that land, in that area. And that's roughly shown on the screens just for illustrative purposes. Any uses in that area cannot cause the gun club to become non-compliant. And the only performance standard that I, at this time, am concerned about, I don't know if concern is the right word, but simply just we have to verify that there's compliance, is noise. And so there are specific statutory limits to noises that are generated over a certain span of time. And so the school district is aware of that requirement and is actively working on finding ways to measure the sound that meet the statutory rules to confirm ultimately that the site would be compliant with statutes. And I can come back and answer more questions on that if you have them. But I would just remind you that again, we're going to receive more detailed plans later on in the development process. This one's sort of like two steps, you could say. The first step is the requests that are in front of you tonight, which are for the comprehensive plan and the rezone. That would be followed later on in the coming months by requests for major subdivision and a conditional use permit for that public school. So there are some considerations we're looking at for conformance with city codes and policies. We don't have enough or concrete enough plans at this time because it's conceptual in nature to be able to verify conformance, but we have a pretty good idea that, we think that the school site can meet things like the city's bulk standards, which is setbacks and impervious, the building design standards that are required by the city's adopted design standards, landscaping and tree preservation requirements, traffic and access is definitely something that the city and county have been communicating on, and then stormwater management. So just to talk a little bit about some of the review comments that we've received at this time. We've routed the plans and narrative internally and into our partner agencies. The city engineer has provided a number of comments in an attached memo, some key ones that I've identified, the traffic study requirement. Because the school site is going to have two access points with what could be a decent amount of traffic on county roads, there would be a need for a traffic study to identify any improvements that are required. Trails, turn lane improvements, utility easements, these are all things that are anticipated that the city will require on this site. That's in addition to right-of-way dedication for any future expansion of the county roads. There are challenges in the community with PFAS, which create issues for private wells. And so the city engineer does have a comment directing that the best way to avoid PFAS in our private well would simply be to connect to city water. MUSA, obviously, the extension of the city's MUSA boundary is also required. So those are comments from the city's engineer. The city's fire chief has two key comments I wanted to identify to you. One is to simply require two access points for a school of this size, for emergency services, and that the buildings will need to be sprinkled per the building code. And lastly, the other comment that I wanted to point out was from Washington County. In this case, they're in affected jurisdiction with the comprehensive plan amendment, so they've provided their comments on that already. The Washington County traffic engineer is concerned with access to this site and any impacts for congestion. And again, the traffic study will help us to understand what impacts there may be. There will be right-of-way required for future expansion of both county roads as they're pretty high-volume corridors and with improvements expected at that intersection. And lastly, pedestrian and bike access is a concern that's been communicated to the city. And bike and ped route planning are strongly recommended by the county. So we did post a public hearing for this item for this evening, and we have received one written comment as of today. And that, just to summarize that comment, and you know, you can obviously decide if you'd like to read it aloud, it's available in the packet for this item. To summarize, the commenter was concerned with school facility needs, the rezoning process and timeline for this property, the tree preservation requirements the city has, and lastly, the proximity of the gun range and specifically conformance with state statutes. So staff's recommendation to you, of course, is to hold the posted public hearing, but also that staff find that the proposal is generally in line with the stated goals and the intent of the city's comprehensive plan and its zoning ordinance, and therefore do recommend an approval to you. So with that said, the school district does have a representative here this evening to answer your questions about their proposal, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions you have for me.
Thank you. Before we get too far into this, I am going to say I am a employee of Stillwater Schools. In consultation with the city attorney, it is determined that I do not have a conflict of interest, so I will be sitting for, I will be voting on this this evening. So, thank you. All right, are there any questions for city staff?
Nathan, so the proposed MUSA is basically an island to itself?
That, yes, it is. Yep, and if I can jump on and clarify. So we did talk to the Met Council about, you know, does this create any issues for us? We're effectively going to have an island on its own. And we did learn that this is not an issue. Per the Met Council, they don't have an issue with us approving a MUSA amendment for this property. I just also add to that, you might be familiar with our requirement to measure density in the MUSA areas. Because the institutional future land use category does not have residential in it, this will not count against the city's density in sewered areas. So that's an important distinction.
So the sewer water would come up from the south?
That's correct, yep. There would be a connection made south along Lake Elmo Avenue.
And whose response for those costs then?
That would be at the developer's cost.
So that would be the school?
Yep.
Okay. And I guess when we talk right-of-way along Lake Elmo Avenue, that's, I mean, if we're going to put in bike lanes or walking paths, I would assume that that's expansion of that road and width, and at some point, there's got to be some land requirements to do that for those property owners, right?
Yeah, so the county has some idea about how much right-of-way it needs to accommodate future expansions. Most often, trail corridors can fit within the planned right-of-way. We, in the comment letter, have identified the need for 75 feet from the center line of Lake Elmo Avenue.
How wide is the road now?
I do not know off the top of my head.
Because I don't think it's 70, it's not 75.
I'm talking about right-of-way, not like curb-to-curb or shoulder-to-shoulder.
Okay. It's a third, yep, which feels about right. All right.
Nathan, for the sake of the whole process, can you just, for everyone here, can you just walk us through, so we're specifically talking about a comp plan amendment, the MUSA and the zoning map amendment today. The recommendation from the Planning Commission, after hearing from the public, will go to the city council. City council will decide on it. Hypothetically saying, let's say, city council approves it. Will the Planning Commission and council then see this, is it plan unit development then, the PUD then?
Yeah, so, yeah, that's a great question.
To hash out all these details with, you know, the trails and the roads and the access and, you know, the gun range and all of it.
Yeah, absolutely. So this will be a first step then, obviously, once the city council makes a determination on this land use guidance. The applicant will then kind of get things moving on their side or keep things moving with the detailed plans that they're preparing for their site. They'll finalize a lot of the details that we're looking at now on the screen. Of course, things are subject to change, but once they're further along with their plans and able to propose them to the city, that's the time where they'll make their subdivision and CUP applications. And it will be the same process as we're going through here, where the city will receive an application, it will publish a public hearing, the Planning Commission will be able to review and then provide a recommendation to the city council for a decision.
Thank you for outlining that.
But it's a rolling stone. So the further down the path we get or we allow this project to go, the more pressure there is and more resources have been committed already for this project. Then if we can say, if we look at it today, we've got to be forward enough thinking to understand everything that might happen or is going to happen according to this in our decision tonight. That's important.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, you said the applicant was here tonight? If you want to come forward and if there's anything you want to share tonight? If you, it looks like there is a question. If you don't mind coming up and introducing yourself.
Mark Drumrells, Director of Operations for Stillwater School District.
Thanks, Mark. As not only the Planning Commission, but I think also as a resident of Lake Elmo and as a parent of kids in three different schools in Stillwater, I guess I don't understand, and I'd like you to explain, and I think the community as well, what sites were looked at? Why did we end up here? Because we're not in a MUSA. I can look out the window and say, there's plenty of land over here. There's plenty of land over here in the MUSA that's connected to the existing city of Lake Elmo. How did the school end up here? Down here, down south, where it's not connected to anything?
We had probably about a year's worth of looking at our end as well as conversations with the city. So last February, a year ago, we had initial conversation with the city of Lake Elmo and the city of Bayport because we're both, two schools at the same time. Literally the same day, we went to both cities and had conversations about how we want this to look. And the Bayport conversation looked a little bit different than the Lake Elmo just based on what the city needs were. So last February, we went to, we came here in the building across the street or, you know, across the parking lot, and talked about when I build a school, talked about different options, and just kind of in February, just kind of just conceptually, here's what I look at, here's some places to look at and so forth. Then after that, we went back and came up with a few different ideas and suggestions. Had another meeting last spring and said, hey, kind of here's what we're thinking. City staff said, hey, kind of here's what we're thinking, here's some ideas, here's some other ones. Went back, had another meeting, summer-ish. I don't have the dates in front of me, but had another meeting and hashed out different ones. We brought like three different sites to get forward and had a conversation with the city. And ultimately, it was the city said, hey, of the ones we've talked about, this is the one we think would be best for you is the site we landed on. So that's how we zeroed in on this property right here and able to move forward with the purchase agreement, then also a successful bond referendum in November. So it was a joint conversation that we've had all along with the city.
I'm not doubting that it wasn't. I just think that the community of Lake Elmo was not brought in. That transparency hasn't existed very well from the city or from the school district of how we rose here, how we wound up here. So I, there's some frustration.
And we took our direction from the city. So I don't know if you follow this, but I mean, the Bayport was a totally different conversation. We had some city meetings, and so those are things that they wanted. This is the process that this city wanted. So we, you know, decided how we wanted to proceed based on the direction we got at those meetings.
Again, I think there has been, it felt, it feels like as a citizen that there hasn't been good transparency of how we got here in partnership. So that's all right.
Hi, I'm Paul Apelkowski with World Architects and Engineers. We're helping the district in this project. I appreciate that public input is a good thing, and we do a lot of that in our work. The reality is that the school district, as you referred to, is a developer, and they're doing a big land deal. And it's really not practical to think that they would bring the whole community to decide what parcel they were going to buy. Just, it just doesn't work that way because they have to purchase the parcel from a private party.
I understand that. And from those aspects of it, I understand that have to be confidential. But also I think there are portions of it that are important to the community to be involved in it. Lake Elmo Elementary over there is a huge part of this town, has been for 100 years. To relocate that to a completely different location is a big deal for everybody who's moved in in the last five years in all these homes. Where the elementary school was outside their window, they could see it. Be it, they don't go there anymore, but that was part of their plan. And historically, it's been there, so the residents have been here a long time, and now we're relocating the whole thing. So I just was looking for, that's where that's important. I understand there's a land deal that has to happen. I understand there's money that exchanges hands, and those are confidential matters. But it feels like, to me, again, as a resident, that, and on the Planning Commission, that we weren't part of any of this. And so that may be a comment to the school district. It may be a comment to the city as well. But that's why to have some understanding of how you ended up down there when there's all this land up here is frustrating to know that, why wasn't this considered in places that are in the existing MUSA?
Can I just add one quick thing? Sorry, I don't mean to belabor this point.
Yeah, no, that's good, you're good.
But I think your last comment really hit on something that was important to us. The school where it sits right now is too far north from where our student concentration is. We needed, if we're going to do a new elementary school, we needed to move farther south. Because right now, where Lake Elmo Elementary sits, it's actually in the Rutherford attendance boundary. So just in looking at it.
But that was changed after the fact, right? I was there, I've been at the meetings. Again, it's three blocks, less than three blocks from my house. My kids don't go there anymore, they go to Rutherford.
With all due respect, Commissioner Raykamp, we're here to discuss the comp plan and the zoning map and the MUSA, not why this site was chosen.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, let's keep it two questions regarding specifically for this PUD. Are there any other questions for?
One of the questions that I have, I think is probably on a lot of people's mind, is what, what is the thought behind how you're going to deal with the gun club? I think it's presumptuous to think that the parents and the faculty and the community at large are going to be okay with this long-term. Could be wrong. What kind of thought has been put into how to deal with that? There's going to be sounds? You know, are you going to be able to distinguish between an active shooter and the gun club next door? You know, all sorts of things like that, can you fill me in?
So yeah, as Nathan presented earlier, it's noise. And so there's some things that we have some testing that we need to be done on-site to see this. There's some noise mitigation, some things that need to be done around that area. So we don't have definitive answers for you as we stand here today, but that is definitely something that's on our list of things that we're going to have to address as we move forward in this process.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. At this point then, we will move to the public hearing.
Motion to open the public hearing.
At, motion to open, 7:27? 7:27, can I get, first by Commissioner Vriesen?
I will second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Bowling. All right.
All those in favor?
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, for the, just some ground rules regarding the public comment section. I will, I have four sheets here. I will read your name, and then you can come forth and please give your name. You will have six minutes to present what you want. You can talk. This is not a time for us to answer your questions. You may have questions, but this is not a time, this is not a question-and-answer session, so we will not be able to answer your questions. There wasn't a letter that was given earlier this evening. I would like it added, it will be added to the section, okay? I think a good synopsis was provided earlier for us, so I think we are good there. At this point then, Mary Sue Schrantz, if you'd like to come forward. Just, sorry. I will give you, like I said, you have six minutes. If you're closer, I will let you know, and you've got about 30 seconds left.
No worries, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
My husband will do a much better job than I'm going to.
Name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mary Sue Schrantz. The address is 11040 12th Street North in Lake Elmo. As you look at your maps, the driveway on County 17 for the proposed school is right up to our backyard. As we were at the, and I'm looking at the drawing, and I get, this is all very new, very fluid. At the first public meeting before the vote, I asked the question, what else would go on this property? Because we, they're buying 47 acres, and part of that presentation was that they would be required by the state of Minnesota for a property of between 21 and 25 acres. What are you going to do with the other acreage? To which the answer was... To which the answer was, well, we've been requested to build a second early childhood center. And that's another building that we could put on that property. I don't see that here. I don't know what the impacts of another building, future building, on the property would be with water, sewer, lighting, trees, the whole litany. I don't know if it's appropriate to ask or to have that conversation, but I certainly was surprised at the second meeting, second public meeting, when the details about the acreage requirement versus the acreage being purchased, and the potential second building, additional building of an EC, early childhood facility, was removed from the presentation. So I don't know where that came and went. But if it is on somebody's list, let's know about it, is my thought. As a 30-year resident, we're the original property developers, property owners, builders of our home on that. The gun club has been our neighbor the whole time. And yes, every day, there's something going on there. There's noise coming down to our property. That's a huge concern. Again, another mother stood up at the public meeting and said, so are you going to tell the kids when they're having an active shooter drill, don't worry about the noise you hear? I'm just stating another comment and concern from a Lake Elmo resident. The trees are, of course, a huge issue. It would wipe out our property, all the trees, the 75-foot right-of-way. And if there's another 10-foot into our property, I got to ask the question, because I don't know what right-of-way dedication means. Is that something that you can answer for me? What that term means? No?
This is just a.
Understood, okay.
Thank you.
I'll go find it out. I'll find it out what that means. But I understand on the property itself, lots of trees, lots of research being done. The other thing that has me very concerned is that it's my understanding from the large comprehensive plan that 17 was not supposed to be a major north-south corridor. If we're going to widen it three times what the road is right now, the county is saying 150 feet right-of-way, 75 on each side, to a 36-foot wide road right now, that becomes a major corridor, just by default. So I would hope that that's also taken into consideration as to the impact to the overall plan for Lake Elmo going forward, as well as the, keep the corridors tree-lined, have development, but keep the rural feel of what Lake Elmo has been and can still be. I think that's enough, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Phil Dryer, if you'd like to come forward.
My name is Phil Dryer. I live at 11040 12th Street North. As my wife mentioned, our property line is literally just to the east of Lake Elmo Avenue North. I have several comments I'd like to make. First of all, regarding statute 87A, I would request the gentleman who presented earlier, the only thing it mentions in terms of non-compliance is a reference to the National Rifle Association's document in terms of what a gun shooting range must have to maintain compliance. I can't find one, because I don't want to buy one from the National Rifle Association. So I'm not sure how we know we're in compliance when we build a school. As far as noise goes, there are specific measurements in the state statute that recommend how you measure that noise level. As a resident of 30 years, I would strongly suspect, having lived on that property line and listening to that from 7:00 a.m. until 10:00 p.m., which they're allowed to do, how in the world you can mitigate that by a berm in the northwest corner of the property line to mitigate that noise? As far as the property, my wife had mentioned they're buying 47.6 acres when they require 22. I'm not sure why the land requirement is that large, but I'm not sure why that wasn't presented in terms of their land requirements. It certainly wasn't presented to us, or wasn't expressed to us during their community sessions, two of which occurred two weeks before the entire referendum occurred. As far as the comprehensive plan, they're pulling in this property 16 years before it's supposed to go from agricultural to some of their properties. That's a really significant pull-in from that. Also, I would recommend on the tree line, I haven't been willing to share with this group if I have to, or if you'd like it. I overlaid their plan with the current plot lines from the GIS from the county. They're taking out at least 60% of the trees on that property, and with the property line they've got on there, I'm not sure how they can maintain county ordinance requiring 30% trees on the property and replacing trees as necessary. Given the county-wide 75 feet they're going to have on each side, that also potentially wipes out the tree line on the south side and east side of the property line, further restricting the number of trees they have. I do respect, and I'm sorry I can't read your name without the, without my glasses, the commissioner that brought it up in terms of planning session, he does make a good point, because their 2019 comprehensive plan that their own community involvement had recommended two schools of 650 students, not an 1,100 city student population school. One of which was to be built on the existing property, associated to the existing property in downtown Lake Elmo, which would be on your septic and sewer system. So I'm not sure how that fits into all of this in terms of them working with the community and the city of Lake Elmo to build this out. I would also say that the utilities, my wife mentioned this as well, dedicated bike path, 10 feet on utilities, that's going to, I measured this with a tape measure, that's going to wipe out our entire tree line on the west side of our property. And our next-door neighbors, that's hundreds of trees that you're going to wipe out, because they want to build a school. You're going to require them to replant on their property, but I have to replant mature trees on my property that we've been planting for 30 years. So I would say, there's a lot of consequences on us. There really wasn't a lot of opportunity to work with the community on this plan. And I think there's a lot of things that they don't really have included in their plan that really mitigate all of these different circumstances that I'm mentioning. Thank you.
Cassandra Knutson, if you'd like to come forward. And again, if you can state your name and your address, please.
Hi, I'm Cassandra Knutson. I have been a resident of Lake Elmo since 2015. I live at 696 James Avenue North in the Savona Development. I have two kids, a one-year-old and a four-year-old. I've worked for school districts before, and I worked for the Department of Education. I would like to start this by saying that I think public comment is extremely important. That's why I attended the district's public comment sessions, and that's why I'm here tonight. I would also just like it to be noted that the public did vote on this. And in Lake Elmo, specifically, just the two precincts in Lake Elmo, there were 1,400 yes votes and 750 no votes. And I think that that should be included in your consideration, that the signage was marked for months, at least weeks. And it was explained online, they had multiple public comment sessions where you could go and learn more. I know this, because I learned more. I live in the Savona Development. I can hear the gun noise every day, and I was extremely worried to have my kids go to a school that was on the property near a gun range. So I went to learn more. When I learned more, I heard that the school district had been working with the city and the county, and that was the proposed location. So upon hearing that, upon hearing that they were talking with the gun range club, and that they were trying to be partners in this, I was satisfied that it was the best that we could get. You know, we have 1,000 kids that are going to go to this school, and they deserve a school that is up to par, where they feel comfortable and safe. And the school that they're in right now isn't needing, meeting those needs either. And so we're at a point where we need a new school. The work was done to get this school in this location built. The public approved it overwhelmingly, knowing where it would be. And so to hear people here express confusion as to what, where this was going to be, like it was a surprise, is a little shocking to me, because it's been known for months. It came to the city of Lake Elmo in November. So you at least knew since November about this. And so having these conversations here in February, and acting like it's the first time you're hearing about it, is shocking. Because I reached out to the school district myself. I called them and was like, I am concerned about this. And so why wasn't more initiative taken as representatives? Like, I would expect that our city would have been at the table fighting for us not to be at the, by the gun range. And, and so it just feels like too little, too late. And I feel like we need to, we need to move forward on this, because we've got a referendum passed. We have the money to build the school now. That money is going to expire, because when you have building plans, we know that they go up over time, right? We know that the costs go up over time. And so are we going to have enough money to build a new school if we carry it out through this process that has, we've already been moving through? I'm extremely frustrated. This is not my preferred location, but knowing that this is where we're at, and we need a new school, I think that this, I think that the commission should move forward, and I think that ultimately, the council should move forward. So that's where I'm at. I mean, I think that the site does have some great benefits. It's south, where a lot of the new development is taking place. It would be better within the school property. I mean, having access to the natural resources would be, you know, phenomenal. And not in, you know, downtown Lake Elmo is terrific, I liked that location, but like, there's like two major streets right there, and, you know, not as much, you know, we're talking about trees and stuff, which is great, but there's not a lot of trees in downtown Lake Elmo, right? And I, you know, am supportive of planting trees and stuff, but we're also talking about building a school that would benefit 1,000 kids a year, and a school that's going to be in place for 100 years. And so I think that, I think that all these conversations are really important. I appreciate the amount of time that people are taking into them. I'm frustrated that we're where we're at, because I think that something got lost in communication here somewhere. And I hope that this can be a learning moment for both the school district and the city on how we work together moving forward, because it's obviously an important part of our community. And that's, that's the end of it.
Thank you. Susan Dunn?
Thank you very much. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, thank you.
And once again, we're here about a comprehensive plan amendment. We're not about whether we should have a good school or not. We've moved here over 53 years ago, and we chose Lake Elmo because of District 834, and we knew what an acceptable school that a district it was at that time. My boys went to Lake Elmo Elementary School, and yes, they could walk. I personally kind of thought, in my own mind, with all the musa lines that have been moved around within the community and the village, that we would have a school in the city center, kind of like they redid the city hall. I went back and looked at some of the information that was put out on the school district and the voting, and saying, come and see what we want to plan for your community. And there were, there were two meetings. One I went to, and there were four people there from Lake Elmo. It was at the old junior high school. There was hardly anybody there, because it wasn't on the list. They didn't know that there was going to be a meeting on November 1st, or I'm sure more people would have come. I want to thank the gentleman that did the overlay, and I thought that that was a great thing to help you guys get an idea of what a plan is. It's one thing when it comes in and you just see a piece of paper, or something up on the video. But whenever the engineers in the county come with what it's going to actually need to accomplish that plan, it would put it into an altogether different perspective. It would give you more ideas. I go down Lake Elmo Avenue almost every day. I go to the regional park and go for a walk, trying to keep my health going. And I look at the corner, and just to think all those trees are going to be gone. And that's not only trees. It's water absorption, it's bird habitat, animal habitat. There's a lot more to it than just a tree. There's thousands of trees, I believe, down there. So I do, I went back and looked at a couple other things, and I quickly read the, your packet. The impact on the traffic would be horrible. And you have to stop and think of the whole 10th Street. Goose Lake is another challenge. Many of us know that oftentimes, water likes to lap right up to that. So that would be a very structural issue, costly to our county, which comes back to being taxpayer gets to pay for that. The Washington County Public Works is a really great group of people. They're very thorough, they're very in-depth, and I think that needs to be really looked at deeply. And a question that came to mind to me is, Lake Elmo's been playing Duke Plan amendments. It's kind of like, instead of a phased plan, like the original thoughts were, it's like things keep moving around, and the musa moved to Tartan Park where it wasn't supposed to be. And then it just kind of, it's morphing into more and more than what was originally thought about, I think, back in 2020. And the gun club, of course, I support the gun club, so I don't have an issue. I, they can't be messed up in this at all. But I looked at our current school, it's already in the musa. We really worked hard, and there are a lot of people from Lake Elmo that worked off to make, help that traffic work effectively and efficiently, so parents could drop their kids off. They newly upgraded the playground and equipment. Washington County upgraded the road and put the signal light in. The school is supposed to be, it's 12.8 acres, and they, I believe it's the, the education board said for a school for this size, you wouldn't need like, not 47 acres, but like 10 to 15. Maybe a little bit more than that, but we're practically there now. And with all the other spaces around in the community, I think we could do a little bit better in this. And a lot of people don't know, in 2021, Lake Elmo already passed a bond for, this was more for, I got, I don't have, I've got to put my glasses on. Getting, in my, in my 80s. Okay. It was a refer, a revenue authorization. And the proposed referendum authorization would increase each year by the rate of inflation, be applicable for 10 years unless otherwise revoked or reduced. And another question that was approved, approving capital project levy authorization for technology funding. So we already have a bond, and our new bond, which the lady said, yes, it did pass overwhelmingly, but nevertheless, they didn't know that there was already something perhaps on the docket. Maybe people don't get tax bills like those of us that do at home. But anyhow, I want to thank you for your time. I want to thank these other people for that thoughtfulness about doing the overlay over what the plan is, like what could it, what's it ultimately going to be look like? Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Say, Susan, if you can give your name.
Susan Dunn, 11018 Upper 33rd Street North, Lake Elmo, Minnesota.
Thank you.
55042.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you. All right, are there any other comments?
You can, well, you can stay up there.
Step right up.
Ben Johnson, if you can state your name and your address, please.
Ben Johnson, 10841 10th Street North, Lake Elmo, Minnesota, 55042. So my lot is directly, basically the bus entrance is in the middle of my, the 500 feet of frontage on 10th Street. So I have pretty strong concerns about traffic on an already busy road. Also setback, it feels like this whole map, which I, I think this is a pretty good orientation, and I should state for the record, I am totally pro-school. Do I think this is my number one choice for location? Probably not. But I think this is a pretty spectacular piece of property, and it would be a good location, especially being a new dad. But I just feel like it is entirely too close to both Lake Elmo Avenue and 10th Street. And I think an effort should be made to try to preserve the boundary trees between the streets and the parking lot, so that, you know, what, we sort of maintain that rural agricultural feel, when not just have an open parking lot in a field. So yeah, traffic, light pollution, trying to preserve boundary trees are the biggest things that I'm concerned about. But otherwise. Um, but otherwise, I think Lake Elmo needs a school. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ben. Are there any other comments? Okay, and at this point, we will close. Uh, we'll get a motion. Sure. You can come back up. If you can, again, just.
Susan Dunn.
Thank you.
I was wondering if somehow, some, if anybody knows all the places where they looked at or investigated for a site? Because I asked twice and I never got any answer. So has anybody gotten an answer of which sites were, what was the criteria, what sites were evaluated? And the pros and cons of each? Did it ended up with just one site? Cause I can't imagine just looking at one site and saying that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any other, all right, I can get a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Well, second.
Okay. And I'm sorry, you first, your last name?
Geffrey.
Uh, first by Commissioner Geffrey and second by Commissioner Rink.
Yeah.
All those, um, can we get a vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, and the motion passes. Um, there is a motion to consider tonight for the comprehensive plan. Um, is anyone willing, wanting to offer the recommendation? There is a recommendation there on our screen. Um, does anyone want to offer it at this point?
Move to recommend the city council approve the request from independent school district eight thirty-four Stillwater area public schools for comprehensive plan and zoning map amendments with the findings and conditions proposed by staff.
Okay, we have a first by Commissioner Vrizy. Do we have a second? Okay.
I will second it, Ben.
Um, I think we should move forward with this. So, Commissioner Vrizy?
There's been a lot of work that's gone into it. Um, I know the school district is working hard. The, uh, current Lake Elmo school is obviously over capacity now. Um, I think this is a good location, um, in my personal opinion. Um, I was a member of Oakdale Gun Club for ten years. I've shot at dozens of ranges around the state and other states. It is by far the safest gun range I've ever been to. Um, they've put a lot of work and a lot of money into enclosing and covering most of those gun ranges as well. Noise will be an issue. Um, I'm sure there's an allowable decibel level that maybe we don't know about now. I live less than a mile from this site. I can hear the gunshots from my house. I was some of those gunshots for a long time. Um, but there's a decibel level. So it, it may be heard, but again, that's, uh, things to work through. Um, Lake Elmo is the fastest growing city in this, in the state of Minnesota, if I'm not mistaken. So this school is desperately needed. Um, and I think this is a nice piece of property. Now, if this property is obviously a motivated seller of this property and if it doesn't become a school, it'll probably become something. It could be a housing development that'll take out even more trees and they'll plant new smaller trees to make up for that. So, for that reason, I'd, I'd, I'd like the school. I appreciate, uh, all the neighbors' concerns. I know that, uh, those are all gonna be addressed in future if this does move forward. Um, but for me, I think, uh, this is a good thing. It's, uh, and that's why I'm for the comprehensive plan amendment and the zoning map amendments.
We'll second those. Um, I do think this school is needed. I do think that this is a good location for this. So therefore I am, um, in favor of this as well.
I'm very much pro-school in Lake Elmo. Um, and I think council knows that because I've talked to all of them when this first came out and was presented to council in November. Um, the referendum vote was for funding. It wasn't for an exact location, although this was a proposed site. And I think my frustration comes with, one, we are now changing the Musa, uh, which was mentioned by, uh, Ms. Dunn again, that we keep on segmenting. We don't take a plan and roll with it. We just seem to adapt a lot and move short-sightedly. Moving forward, that's one of my concerns with this. We're created on Musa Island in the middle of it, in the middle of, by itself and we're not tied to a bigger development plan. I'm in favor of other locations because I think the school is an important part of downtown Lake Elmo. Um, and within that, it's the resources that school brings to this community that it's always had in the past. The location where it's at is not walkable and be it, yes, I know most of the students are coming from the south, but it's not, doesn't become a resource for the, for the downtown area of Lake Elmo. Um, and I guess my frustr, part of my frustration, which is obvious, is that I don't think, I don't feel like there, we, any of us knew where the other sites potentially were. And that was, it's frustrating as a resident and as a council and as a commissioner on the planning commission. So with that, I am not in favor of changing our comprehensive plan to put the school here.
Can I ask a question about changing the zoning? If we went ahead and recommended this? And then further down the road when we have the, all the other BUDs and all this other, all the other parts that are gonna go into it? What happens if some of those parts don't work? We've already changed the zoning, correct?
Yes.
You know, I mean, that's a permanent thing.
Yep, Commissioner, I think I understand your question and it, it is, um, you know, so if the city were to approve the, the land use guidance proposed here, um, would it be, you know, locked in in some, to some degree or, or, or how, you know, how might the school or city rather manage? You know, if, if the school project didn't materialize after the land use guidance requests were approved? So if that's the question, uh, the answer would be the, the city has the, you know, the discretion to change the land use guidance back theory, you know, hy, in, in this hypothetical situation, that might be, um, a city initiated process uh, to simply revert the land use back to what it is currently.
Okay. I just, I see a lot of, you know, I, a lot of concerns, which I am fully in agreement with, you know, noise, the trees, you know, it, the trees are a big deal. Um, can we make some, you know, halfway, meet halfway, meet in the middle type of thing with some of this type of thing? And if it doesn't, or if it delays all of this, I just want to make sure that whatever happens tonight is forward enough thinking that there could be bumps in the road coming down the pike. And I just wanted to make sure that what we do tonight is allowing for the bumps in the road. If that makes sense, but. It is a rolling stone and I think there's gonna be bumps in the road and I just want to be prepared and I want to make sure I'm making a educated decision.
Do you have any? No?
I will, I'll keep it condensed.
Okay.
I think the site is wildly impractical for a, uh, educational institution. Um, I don't even want to see the ball rolling on this one. Uh, I think the, the long-term ramifications from that location are not fully understood by some of the people that are planning this. And I can only imagine what will happen in the long term. Safety is certainly a concern. Um, and it's, the noise is just, the noise is irrelevant. And the traffic, I grew up on Tenth Street. I've been out here since, you know, nineteen eighty-eight, thirty-something years. Um, we can't even get out of our driveway at many times a day. The traffic is backed up for miles on Tenth Street. There is no, and, and, you know, Lake Elmo Avenue doesn't have freeway access, so, um, it's wildly impractical. I will not support this. Um, I think there's plenty of other property around. I know there is right across from our home. In fact, there's plenty. Lots of houses that just went up. They could have been used. Let's keep looking. I'll end with that.
All right. Are there any other further comments? All right, there is a motion on the table then to approve, to recommend the city council. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, the motion fails, uh, three to zero at this point. We do need to provide then something back to council of what we would recommend. Um, since I, I feel that, um, if you guys want to craft a motion that, um, that we can talk about, but I do feel we do at least need to provide options back to council so they can hear what we feel.
I believe there's existing locate, there's locations available within existing muses.
I'd second that.
At this point, it just leaves us kind of a little bit of a quandary because we're not able to recommend locations, um, for that. Um, what would be the best way forward for council so that they have something? Cause I don't, I don't want us to be offering up locations here tonight. I don't think that's in our role. But at the same time, we do need to provide other options for council.
Yep, uh, Chair, that, that is a great question. So, uh, what the planning commission should, should do, as you mentioned, is to provide a recommendation to the city council for a decision. Uh, it sounds like there are three members of the commission that are not, uh, in support of the current proposal by the school. Uh, so potentially, you know, if you were to consider a recommendation to deny that the proposal as requested, you would want to provide findings, um, articulate reasons why you're making this recommendation to the city council.
Part of my concern at this point, and I understand its time and its money and I, I understand all of that, that in order, this is a big project. And it's gonna require money to see what is the road gonna look like, what is the setback gonna look like, what is the traffic gonna look like? And I understand that that is the next steps. But I think that the community as a whole deserves to just get a glimpse at what some of that might look like. Um, so it's not necessarily the area, the, the location. But if we approve this location, are we really looking at the impact of every, everyone around there? And is it really feasible? I mean, the traffic, the trees, the safety of the kids getting to and from school and yes, a lot of them will bust, that kind of thing. Um, I liked the idea that there's going to be additional, um, playgrounds and ba, ball fields and so forth for people to utilize. But how do they get there? You know, that kind of thing. Um, I just, I guess I wanted to see a little more of a full picture. Does that make sense?
Chair members of the commission, if I can jump in again. So, for, if we're thinking about options, um, the city has a sixty-day review period for, for planning requests. Can extend it for another sixty days if it, um, needs more time to review than, review an item. So one option the planning commission has used in the past is to have items brought back in front of them. Um, perhaps you have questions that you feel like the school could answer in more detail. Uh, those are, you know, things that you could ask for, uh, in, if this item were to return to you. Um, the other alternative is simply to provide, um, and, and the faster way is simply to provide a recommendation to the city council and have this go to them for their review. So, I, I'm not clear as staff on, you know, kind of what you're looking for out of, out of this process. So if you can continue to articulate some of those things, I just wanted to make those options available to you.
Yeah, I guess I would be of the feeling that, um, I think it would be best for us to provide a recommendation for those of you to present to the council. That's, I guess, where I would like to see this go forward. I think that would be the best then to.
I mean, I'm out of line in saying that I believe this, the new school should be within the exist, one of the existing muses.
Say whatever you want.
I don't know.
Yeah, you can.
I mean, you, you can offer that.
That, that would, there's my suggestion.
So Nathan, it sounds like from, if, if I'm understanding you correctly, um, and Mr. Chair, the, the idea here is that, um, as we've done in the past on other issues, take the recommendation to approve with modifications. But we must recommend to approve?
Uh, the planning commission can make a recommendation based on findings that it, that it articulates. It doesn't have to be for an approval. Um, in, in a lot of cases, staff will recommend a conditional approval. Uh, but with this, with this particular type of request, this is to change the, the, that base land use guidance. And so, um, I, I don't know how you're gonna condition an approval like this versus like if it were a development saying, you know, um, we need, you know, X number of plantings or X number of feet, you know, in terms of setbacks. So that's a more traditional kind of conditional type of approval. So I, I'm not sure how you would condition an approval here.
My concerns can't be addressed by any sort of, um, amendment to the motion. I.
If we asked for this to come back, um, does this still go to city council?
So we, we do have some additional time within our review window. Uh, it doesn't have to go to city council immediately. Um, we have in the past brought some developments back where there's questions or if there's more information that the planning commission would like to see. Uh, in this case, it would be very helpful to staff and it, and just to help u- us understand, you know, what are those things that you would like to understand better if you, if we were to bring this back, uh, back in front of you?
So if we're gonna have this then come back, I guess I would like to hear what those specific.
I, I think they just need to provide some findings of fact.
Correct.
For reasons for denial. At this point, we're not, we don't need another motion or anything like that. We just need to, findings of fact and reasons for denial.
It's not in the Musa.
Okay.
That's a good one. Anybody else?
Anyone else?
I wanted to see the traffic, the, the trees. I, I, I want a bigger picture of how it's gonna affect the area.
Here's a technical one. I'd like to see a study done on the noise levels, um, to determine whether or not eighty-seven A point zero four section B requires mitigation.
Just a point of, yeah, I appreciate those are findings being articulated, uh, to, to, to provide a little bit more clarification to the commission. Um, this, the city staff and have expectations that those concerns regarding information that's outstanding will be, you know, those requirements for, for information will be satisfied when the school comes back with their detailed plans. That would be part of what I've called kind of step two of this process. So, um, w- we do have the expectation of having those things, but, uh, we don't have them yet. So I guess that's just as a clarification point for me.
And, yeah, and as we've seen before, sometimes those, these things do come. This isn't a full picture tonight. Um, there are times when we do get more information and it does come later. The, the, tonight was just to approve this request.
Zoning.
Zoning request, correct. Um, but we will, we do, as was stated, we will be getting more information later from the school district as we move forward within this process. So, are you, is there more information that you need from us then?
So yeah, at, at this point in time, uh, my understanding as staff is to, is that the planning commission would like to review this item at its next uh, meeting or at the next o- opportunity that staff can bring this back in front of you. Is, is that correct, Chair and, and Commission?
So.
Or is the, or is the commissions, I guess I'm looking for feedback on which direction you'd like to move. Are we gonna make a recommendation based on the findings that you've articulated? Um, that the three commissioners have articulated for a denial? Or would the planning commission like to s, to, to learn more about this particular item at a future meeting? You have two options.
I'll leave that up. Would you guys like to?
Tom, you want to hear any more about it?
Move this into a recommendation or do you want to have it come back at a later date?
And it does not go to council until?
Yep, so Chair and Commission, just to kind of reiterate the process here, the, these requests would go to the city council after you make a recommendation. Uh, we have a hundred and twenty days to make a recommend, or a decision as the city. Uh, and we're probably somewhere between thirty and forty, if I had to think off the top of my head here, days in, into this process. So, uh, we still have some time, um.
Right, but Mr. First, there's a date for council to review this, no matter what our recommendation is.
There will be a council review at, at the end of the day, at, at the end of the period for review, yep. So if, if the planning commission makes a recommendation this evening, we will bring it to the next city council meeting that we can get it on. Or if the planning commission would like more information, we would simply, um, find a date that is the next available planning commission that we can satisfy those questions.
So I feel that we have enough information from the city staff for what we need. So at this point, if you guys would like to offer another recommendation, um, that's fine.
I, I've offered my recommendation.
Okay, um, then if you want to read that and then we can move it to a vote. So if you want to craft your recommendation.
Which is move to recommend the city council deny the request from ISDA thirty-four?
Yes.
Uh, Stillwater area public. Stillwater area public schools comprehensive zoning plan amendments within the findings condition proposed by staff.
And then you would also like this?
That I'd like, I would like the proposed school location to be within one of the existing muses, within Lake Elmo.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Raykamp. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by, I'm sorry.
Geffrey.
Second by Commissioner Geffrey. Commissioner Raykamp, you can offer your.
We've got a plan, and that's supported by as much as I don't necessarily believe in it, the Met Council, but there's where sewer and water is, there's where the existing transportation assets lie, roads and sidewalks and paths. That's where the growth plan was generated and the foundation of that, and I think we should stick with that because there is land, appears to be land available.
Commissioner Geffrey?
Like I said, I'd echo that.
I will be voting against this. I feel that the original recommendation was good. I think that that's for the reasons I've already stated. So are there any other comments? Okay, having that, then we have, we can vote on Commissioner Raykamp's motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Okay, so motion carries three to two. All right, at this point, why don't we take, for those of you that are here, if you would like to leave, you can leave. Why don't we take a quick two-minute break? Thank you. All right.
Chair, you ready?
Moving on to issue the zoning text amendment.
Thanks, Chair and members of the commission. So we have zoning text amendments that are part of an overall housekeeping initiative that staff have undertaken at the beginning of, of the year. Most years, we have snow on the ground and it's a little less busy at this point in time, so it's kind of a natural time of year to do a little bit of cleanup on the city code. As part of the process that came through, you'll recall in January, we did identify a couple other changes that we just didn't have posted. We needed a public hearing posted for those items to get fixed with the fixes that we identified, and so we've post, reposted for these particular city code sections to be amended, and I'll, I'll walk you through these changes. These are intended really to be reflective of current city policies and not really changing any rules, policies, regulations. So we have three different city code sections that we're proposing to modify. Number one is in the subdivision ordinance, and this normally doesn't require Planning Commission review since it's part of what I would consider like this group of, of changes. We've just lumped it in. Then we have two items from the zoning code, one for security escrows for construction, and another for permits, certificates, and licenses. So I'm going to kind of page down here in the subdivision ordinance, the language we're proposing to add, this is the red underlined text, is simply information on when securities can be returned at, and at which point during the process for a, for a development. So most like subdivisions, you've seen a number of them come through, when, when those get approved by the city, they have a development agreement. That's a, that's a condition of the approval. The development agreement contains securities that allow the city to pretty much correct, if absolutely necessary, conditions on the site that are nuisances, or to complete, you know, if it were a, a public road that were to be built and got, you know, halfway constructed, you know, the city could come in and, and use those securities. And those securities are supposed to be released a, after the project has been completed and the warranties have expired. So this language simply provides the city with language and reinforces the city's ability to keep a security until various things have been accomplished, conformance with building code and city code, in addition to other unique requirements of the DA. Moving on to the next one, we have a number of changes here to the security escrow for construction. This is to work in concert with the changes that were proposed by the city in January. Again, this is more of a, reinforcing what our policy is now and how we manage these things as opposed to change, creating new, new requirements. And so one of the things that the city i- is looking to do is, or staff are looking to have in, in city code is, is to provide more information and more clarity regarding when security escrows are released for, or required rather, for single-family construction. And we have lumped single and two-family construction together in these, in these amendments because the scope and the timeline for a single versus a two-family home are virtually the same. If there are specific questions for me on, on these, I'm happy to take those, those questions. And then the last section here that we're proposing to change relates to permit certificates and licenses, and specifically is focused on the language around expiration. We've found that the city's existing language is actually in conflict with the state statutory language on expiration for building permits. And so in some areas, we are unable to be more strict than the state building code, and this is one of those areas where that has been identified. So we're proposing language that greatly simplifies the rules on expirations that the building official can use when it is, when it is needed. So that's pretty much the, the scope of those changes that we're proposing. I'm happy to take questions that you have for me at this time. We haven't received any comments, I should add, on, on this, because you might be shocked to hear.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
I don't see anything controversial.
Besides yourself, Nathan, who did you work with on city staff to draft some of this language? Was it the department department, or, you know, the building officials themselves, or?
The actual comment, the, the reviewers on this are, are numerous. We've had the city's building official who identified the expiration issue specifically to us. We've had the city engineer because we have things with securities and escrows in it, we've also had the city attorney give, give a review of, of these amendments. The only, I did want to mention, the only comment that the city attorney had that has not been yet incorporated that we plan to incorporate is one on defining the growing season, which is difficult to pin down lately, but.
I did have a question, that was, that was my next question, is the temporary certificate occupancy should not be issued in the growing season?
So typically, if you look at the University of Minnesota Extension, that's going to be May until September. So to define the growing season, we would probably rely on our experts in, in that area.
It, I don't have, it's not a question, but maybe a suggestion. It's not going to be a condition of approval for me, but if we're going to reference Minnesota Rules Part thirteen hundred point zero one two zero for the expiration, maybe we could just put a clip of that in there, so instead of having to go search for the Albany, the Minnesota rules, they could just have it right there. But if, if I was a developer and I said, okay, well, now I got to go find this rule, but.
Assuming it's not five pages of, yeah.
It's actually, I mean, if you were to, i- i- it's pretty easy. Now, I do this all the time, so it's easy for me to find, right? It's easy for me to say, but it is pretty easy to search for specifically for Minnesota statutes, and, and if you find, if you use the number, the right reference, you're going to be in pretty good shape at finding the language you need, but point well made, yep.
And that's the only comments that I have. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Looks good, nice work. Thank you.
Right, this is a public hearing, so if I can get a motion to open the public hearing at eight twenty.
Motion opens public hearing.
I'll second it.
First by Commissioner Rezzi, second by Commissioner Raykamp. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, public hearing opens at eight twenty. There are no comments, and there is nothing online. All right, so mo-, motion to close the public hearing at eight twenty-one.
I move to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Okay, if we can get a vote on that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. If we can get a motion then for, for this, for the zoning text amendment.
Motion to recommend approval of the proposed text amendment as presented by staff.
I'll second.
First by Commissioner Rez, second by Commissioner Raykamp. Commissioner Rezzi?
Clarity is the best, and if we have some ambiguous language there already, it does everyone a service to spell it out, clarify it, and so that there's no room for interpretation. So this is a good thing, that's why I'm for it.
Commissioner Raykamp?
Great work by staff, nice cleanup.
Any other questions? I think, yeah, I think this is good and provides more clarity, so that's always good. Any other questions? Okay, we can have, for all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Moving on, commission, communications and updates, or new and unfinished business first, and then.
We have no new and unfinished business.
Communications and updates?
At the February sixth City Council meeting, there were four planning items that were reviewed. All of them were approved, and that includes an Old Village Moratorium, the eighty-twelve Hill Trail variance, the twenty-twenty-three housekeeping amendments, which was the first part, and then the Bridgewater Village preliminary plat.
Can you write a little context to the Old Village Moratorium for anyone that's not familiar with it?
Correct. So the Old Village Moratorium would be for one year, and it is related to the corridor area of the Old Village, so that would be pausing development while the City Council will have a workshop in it in April to determine, to determine the scope of the work that's going to be done, but essentially it'd be reviewing the corridors, the utility, road, trail, pedestrian connectivity, and then possibly updating the two thousand and seven village master plan.
So you for sure couldn't build a school there for the next year?
No land use applications.
Gotcha, thank you.
I believe that the moratorium can be rescinded at any time by council within that year.
Correct, it can be lifted early.
What, what's the, I, you said there's a meeting in April on that?
Correct, City Council will have a workshop.
Okay.
To determine scope.
Is that, I'm, I'm asking this for residents who have asked me, do they, do we foresee this being lifted within a year? Is it going to take a year to get this all figured out?
Depends on the scope and guidance City Council provides.
Okay. Business owners are curious, that's really what's going on because it's impacting them. Thank you.
And then upcoming meetings, we have a joint workshop with the City Council tomorrow. That'll start at six thirty, which is different than our typical seven o'clock start time, and then February twenty-sixth and March eleventh.
Thank you. Anything that we need to prepare for the workshop tomorrow?
Review the report.
Got it.
I will try to make it, but I do have a wake, so I don't know that I can make it. All right.
Chair, Chair members of the commission, if I could just add one item that's on our radar recently, so as part of the review of the Public Facility Zoning District, we identified a unique, I'll say, limitation in that district to, it's unique, in my opinion, to Lake Elmo. It, it restricts wastewater generation on sites as a way to limit the development intensity on properties, and so we've kind of done some discussion, and the city already has various standards that limit the intensity of development, such as impervious surface, height limitation, setbacks, those types of things. So the wastewater requirement is sort of confusing, so one of the ideas that we have is simply to remove that requirement because the city has imposed the requirement only on itself and not on any of the business districts or anything of that nature. So to limit public facilities or institutional uses to wastewater generation and not the other uses seems a little counterintuitive, so we are exploring and may bring forward a city-initiated amendment to correct that and probably remove that particular limitation due to the confusing nature. So I just wanted to put that on your radar as staff, just so that in the, in the coming months, if you see something that, that's what it would be about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and no other comments then, we will close the meeting at eight twenty-six.